Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll start this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item of business is citizen comments, and I don't see any citizens wishing to render comment. So our next item is approval of the minutes for the February 18th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
Been moved in a second to approve the minutes from February 18th, 2020. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Minutes are approved unanimously. So, next item is the comprehensive plan parks element, and invite our esteemed city staff to join us for that.
Good evening, Planning Commission. And so, we're here to talk about the Parks Recreation Open Space Element of the Comprehensive Plan. And it might seem like, gosh, didn't we just do that? And in fact, yes, you did. And that was the Park Recreation Open Space Plan, and council adopted that by resolution on February 24th. And we've sent that off to the state, to the Recreation and Conservation Office, and they have final approval. So that document is basically the foundation of the Park Recreation and Open Space Element of the Comprehensive Plan, and also feeds into the Capital Facilities Element of the Comprehensive Plan. So that's what we're here to talk to you about tonight. So we figure that as this is fairly fresh in your mind, and there aren't really any significant changes, that we think this might be sort of a fairly quick part of the docket for this year. So I'm going to turn it over to Laurie, and she can kind of go over some of the changes.
Right. Good evening. So I just want to highlight three changes, probably the most significant in terms of the difference between the Prose Plan and the Comprehensive Plan elements, both the Parks Recreation and Open Space Element and the Capital Facilities Element. And those three changes are shown, well, all the changes are shown in red text in the document, but the most substantive ones are that we have added information about the countywide planning policies, and how the policy direction from that feeds into, I'm just going to call it the Parks Element, so I don't have to say the whole thing every time. And that, we did that because almost all the other elements of the Comprehensive Plan have a paragraph that addresses the countywide planning policies, so I wanted to add that in. We also added in a section on intergovernmental coordination opportunities. That is something from the Growth Management Act that is supposed to be in the Parks Element. And although there was a flavor of that throughout the Prose Plan, I wanted to make it a little bit more explicit. So there were, I think, two or three paragraphs about that, things we have done, things we are considering, et cetera. And then the third thing, and this isn't a, this is a little bit harder to follow, but I'll just describe what happened. In the Prose Plan, there was a section called Recommendations, and that had a series of recommendations for actions that the city could consider. And then we also had the section on Goals, Policies, and Objectives. And those two things were the basis for the projects in the Capital Facilities Plan. In the Element, we don't have a Recommendations section. So what I did to capture those recommendations is to move them into the Policy, the Goal, Objective, and Policy section. So it was really clear that there was a policy that somehow related to the Capital Facilities Element. So I sort of mushed those two things together. I didn't do it in every case, because in some cases, we already had a policy, for example, that addressed recommendation. But in other cases, we didn't. And that's why there's new text added in the Goals, Objectives, and Policies. So those were the primary changes. And in the Capital Facilities Element, really, the only change was to replace the table with the table that was in the Prose Plan. So with that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Try to answer them.
This is just a technical kind of thing that stood out to me was in Figure 1, the chart, I believe. The first chart in the Element, it states at one point, Inglemore Wetlands. Is that supposed to say Inglewood Wetlands? Because throughout the rest of the charts, it says Inglewood Wetlands.
I think that's very true.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, my colleagues are looking through that. I'll ask a couple of maybe clarifying questions too.
Sure.
Let's see, what page is this? Well, it's on page 10 of the whole document. I think it's maybe page four of the Comprehensive Plans section. There's listings for paved trails, and there's also listings for hiking trails. And I just wondered about the distinction between them, specifically for Swamp Creek Park, which I'm very familiar with, living near there, which definitely is a paved trail, but I guess it could classify it as a hiking trail. So I just wondered what the, it's in the Parks and Rec System Inventory, Figure 1 on page 4 of the Prose Element.
Oh, it's that same table, the inventory table?
Yes, the inventory table.
It's the one that we just talked about.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, I see. Okay, so you are asking for Wallace Swamp Creek?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why some are hiking trails and why others are paved trails.
Right. I think the distinction, and Debbie, you can help me if I don't have this figured correctly, is that for hiking trails, they don't have to be paved. So for example, at St. Edward State Park, there are a number of hiking trails that are, you know, packed earth as compared with something like the Burt Gilman Trail, which would be a paved trail. So I think that's the difference. And so if at Wallace Swamp Creek, what you're suggesting is that it should be a paved trail rather than a hiking trail?
I'm just wondering what, yeah, what the distinction is. And it could be just, you know, mere semantics. You can hike on them even though they're paved.
Right.
Obviously, so.
Right. Well, I think, you know, if you look at what the paved trails are, really, they're the pipeline and St. Edward's.
St. Edward's, one which.
We didn't do this inventory, so we're sounding kind of like.
I think what we'll have to do is kind of go back and sort of take a look at the logic, because there is some logic to the distinction between paved trails, hiking trails, and paths. And it's something that it's not immediately coming to me as to that distinction, but there is one. So if it's not clear, then we should probably have to clarify that.
It's a minor point, but I was just curious about that.
If it's, if it isn't clear, then we need to make it clear.
Make it clear.
Yeah. So we will check back with the originator of the table and figure out what the difference is and report back.
That sounds great.
And then see if, once we know what the difference is, whether there are any inaccuracies in the table.
Sounds like a good plan.
Does that sound okay?
That sounds great, yep. Commissioner Olson.
I think part of the distinction, too, is that things may change with the season, because I visited Swamp Creek Park during the flooding.
It's not very paved, is it?
And some of those paved ones were no longer paved. They were covered with debris, deep water, and other things.
It was a hiking trail.
Yes. I think it was a swimming trail.
That's right. There you go. It's our swimming pool. It's our aquatic center. Good point.
Just one question, mostly showing probably my own ignorance, but on Figure 10, I was just trying to make sense of the last two numbers. We say the city of Kenmore Parks, we have 146 acres, and which gives 1763 people per park. Then when we bring in, in total, 475 acres in Kenmore, and we actually end up with a lower number of individuals for a larger number of acres, and our acres per thousand go up. Is there a difference in the catchment area or the population in those two numbers? Is that why that comes out that way? Sure, Figure 10, Prose Plan, let's see, page 50 of the overall document.
It's in the Prose Plan, not in the Element?
This was, I think, it's in the, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize those were separate documents.
Right. One is, one we just attached so that you would have it available. So now, let me find Figure 10.
An earlier meeting, but that just kind of stood out. Maybe something needed a little more explanation.
Right, it's this, nope, we don't have this in. The question was, it shows 6.4 acres per 1,000 population. And what were you contrasting that with?
When we're looking at the next row down, all park and recreation facilities were up to 475 acres, but our number of people per park goes down from the overall average. So trying to make sense of why we would add more acres but actually end up having a lower level of service. I suppose there's something in there, maybe the denominator of park is somehow different between those two numbers, or it's a different catchment area, it's more than just Kenmore that's figured into that number. But I was just looking at it, and I just couldn't make sense of that.
Right, it's in the Prose Plan, and it won't be something we'll be changing, for sure. But I'm happy to go back and try to.
No, I'm looking down.
He's looking at the last two lines on, it's page 50 of the Prose Plan. So 146 acres, 1763 people per park versus all park and recreation at 1528. And I think you're asking why that number goes down.
Yeah. Three times as many acres, but we seem to be serving fewer number of people.
Well, this is per park.
Well, and that's my question.
Yeah, it may have to do with what type of a park it is, yeah. Right. Okay, I can find out.
I just had a clarifying question on the maps above in the Element. So in those maps, I know it kind of describes and lists the parks that are present within the city of Kenmore, but it also goes on to clarify the sidewalk and bike lanes that are being improved. I'm just curious as to why those are also listed on these maps along with the parks in the city as well.
I think because one of the important goals and ideas in the Prose Plan was to provide safe routes to parks, so that showing those routes seemed appropriate. It's kind of serving two purposes, showing the parks and the.
So it's including both of them, so it's not just the parks, but also the improvements to expand the accessibility to them.
I had a question on Goal P2. It's on page 29 of the whole attachment in the Element. I don't see a page number towards the, towards the end. It's Provide Safe Routes to Parks Recreation Open Space Facilities, Goal P2. I noticed the downtown is stricken from the objective in the first policy. Is there a?
Right.
What's the thought behind that?
The thought behind that was that we are talking about safe routes to Parks Recreation and Open Space, and somehow it didn't fit in my mind to identify and prioritize connections from neighborhoods to downtown. It seemed really that what we wanted was key connections from neighborhoods to the waterfront, our parks, and public facilities. So I felt like downtown was kind of an outlier. I know in other places, we certainly want connections to downtown, but under this particular one, when we're talking about Parks Recreation and Open Space, I didn't think it fit.
Okay, that, I think that makes sense. I mean, I guess it's sort of implicit, if you're talking about neighborhoods to the waterfront from anywhere, you know, north, often will go through downtown anyways. So that makes sense to me. Thank you.
For some of these policy numbers, I see that there's additions added in, but the policy numbers following them don't change or they haven't been updated. Will those be updated in the?
Oh, yeah, I see one right in front of it, 125. This should be 126. Yeah, we need to fix that.
But those will all be updated?
Yeah, the numbers will change.
Because I noticed that through a few of the different policies.
Okay. You all did a very fine reading of this.
Actually, in Policy 3, I believe it's 3.1.10, that's a new one, I believe. It says, "Support Educational Opportunities Provided by Other Jurisdictions, Organizations, or Agencies." Is that specifically just for other agencies and jurisdictions, or would that also incorporate ours as well, the city, if the city were to put on anything?
I think this one was talking about other places. 3111, the very first one, talks about opportunities to provide access and views to and education about. So I thought that the educational opportunity issue for Kenmore itself was in 311. And this was another opportunity to talk about partnerships.
Okay. I was just curious about that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'll jump in with a couple more. On Goal P4, create a balance of passive and active recreation opportunities. And then Policy P4 dot 1 dot 11, it talks about the partnership with neighboring cities in North Shore School District, acquire land and develop a joint aquatic and community center as a regional facility. I know this is a sort of a broad policy objective. Is there any sense of who takes the lead on that, or who, you know, what forum? Is it through the Parks and Recreation, PRSA? NPRSA? Is it through that? Or I'm just, or is it even that far along?
Yeah.
If there's anything known, is it just a general statement of policy intent?
It's just a general statement that if we're going to do something like that, it really needs more than just the city. And these entities are likely to be involved, but in what format, to be determined.
We'll have to wait and see on that. Okay. I thought that was the case, but I just was kind of curious.
You're absolutely right.
And then on the next one, P-4 dot 1 dot 12, talks about strategy for long-term replacement of the fields at Bastier. And I guess I kind of stuck on the word replacement. Is it a sort of a foregone conclusion that eventually those will be replaced? Or I know the lease is up in, what is it, 20?
2025.
25. Is it possible that that would, you know, they would continue and that perhaps fields would be supplemented elsewhere? So I guess the word replacement just caught my eye as being pretty definitive, that eventually those would go away and there would be some other fields in their place.
I guess we could kind of look at the wording to sort of say, you know, I guess what we're trying to capture in here is that we might need to replace those fields if the lease isn't extended, and/or if Bastier's future plans include development of that area.
Right.
So I think it was trying to capture that. I mean, it doesn't preclude that Bastier might be willing to extend the lease further than, you know, 2025. We just don't know.
Could we make the wording maybe a little more conditional, as you described?
Right.
Because I read this as saying, oh, they're going to go away. That's the way I read this one sentence.
So I think it's kind of basically trying to say, you know, we can, right now, there's a lease in place. It's unknown if that lease can be extended. If the lease is not extended, we'll need to explore opportunities to find other fields or replace those fields.
Yeah, this concept.
Can the language reflect maybe the conditional nature of?
This concept came straight from the Prose Plan. If you want to look at the Prose Plan language, that might be helpful. It's on page 77. It's entitled, it's the second from the bottom. The recommendation says, "Bastier Field Replacement or Development of Other New Fields." Develop a strategy for long-term replacement of the fields at Bastier. Initially, this would include extending the lease. So I picked up this language directly from the Prose Plan. That doesn't mean it has to be identical, but that is the genesis of this particular language.
Right. I see where you got that. And maybe I should have commented when we were doing the Prose Plan, but I still maybe see if you could maybe incorporate some of the other language on page 77 here. At least that's my, that's my thought.
Excuse me, if we were to add after university, comma, if necessary, does that help?
Sure, that would probably solve all my angst.
Great.
And while we're talking fields, I just, maybe this is more just a point of curiosity. Now that the St. Ed's Ball Field is nixed, what happens to that space? Does it just kind of continue as status quo? What's the fate of that particular space?
Well, it's owned by State Parks, so it's basically up to them. Their planning document, the camp document, I think we talked about efforts to renovate that field, but I mean, that's a document from several years ago now. So it's up to State Parks to figure out what they want to do to keep as is, to renovate the field, to turn it into a wetland. I don't know. Have not heard what their long-term plans are.
But it's obviously in their court, if you will.
Yes, exactly.
At this point. Okay, thank you. Any other? Mr. Loosens?
I did have just a clarifying question, or a question about technicality of something that was, it was under future demand and needs, under participation rates. I saw a couple of examples used in there of, I guess, private groups or private organizations such as Camp Roots and Wilderness Awareness School. And I was wondering, is that safe to use the names of those in this kind of context, or would it be more appropriate to say, I guess, natural educational summer camps or something like that, along those lines to where it's not bringing in other?
It's fine to use the names.
I was just curious about that. Thank you so much.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts? I'm good for now. Anybody else want to?
Good. Well, so with these edits and responses to questions, what we would like to propose is that you hold your public, you have to have a public hearing on a comprehensive plan element. So we would target the public hearing for April 7. We need 14 days' notice, which always means that we're like a meeting off. But the other thing is that the city council, city manager has asked for the 17th, which is your meeting date, to hold another meeting. That was the only evening that they could arrange this meeting. And so the good news is, because you've given us all of your suggestions, we'll amend it as you've requested and come back with responses to your comments. But then we would hold the hearing on April 7, and then you could make your final changes. So with your permission, we'll go ahead and advertise the public hearing for that evening. That's a regular meeting. The way this will work, this is kind of unusual in that, as you know, we can only amend the comp plan once a year, except in special circumstances. Shoreline was one of those special circumstances. So we will be holding, after you hold your public hearing, it won't go directly to the council. We'll be holding this element and the Capital Facilities element to bundle with any other comprehensive plan changes that are needed as a result of your other docket items, so that it will go back to the city council in the fall, the whole comprehensive plan package. So this will be unusual in that you will have held your hearing, but you won't go to a joint meeting and present until the whole thing is ready in the fall.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Wait, Bart, so our meeting on the 17th, is that canceled?
Yes.
We need a motion.
We would need a motion to cancel it.
But the room is taken, so.
I think it's for the Financial Sustainability Plan Committee, so some of you might already be going to that meeting.
No skin off of me. They'll use a small table with a center. So you need a motion?
You need a motion.
We do need a motion.
I move that we cancel the meeting on the 17th, and make way for higher order.
I think you mean March 17?
March 17.
Got it. Second, moved in a second to cancel the March 17th Planning Commission meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. It passes.
The only other thing that we wanted to bring up is, the next docket item is related to the affordable housing. And there are two things. One was the missing middle topic, and the other topic was looking at a process to help speed along affordable housing projects on public property or tax-exempt property. So those were the two docket items. And being as the missing middle topic could be pretty broad in nature, we thought maybe having an initial joint meeting with the council on April 20th might be a good idea. And what we can do then is we would prepare some materials for that joint meeting, identify, giving some background on those topics, so that council and planning commission had that background information, and identifying some policy questions. And it then gives the opportunity for both the planning commission and council to talk about some of those policy questions, which then might help hone in on what the direction would be for these docket items. So that is the plan. So if you could put April 20th on your calendars for the possible joint meeting.
Do you need commitments now, or are you?
If you know now, that would be good to know. If you know now, that would be good to know.
I think, I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure. We've done it in a number of ways. We've done it where the council is here and the planning commission here. We've done it in a, you know, a square. I think what is probably going to dictate the setup is what other items are on the agenda. So if the other business agenda items, it might be the planning commission here and the council there, because it was a little awkward to have, you know, a different setup, but I don't know.
And the goal of doing the joint meeting, which Debbie probably already said, is that you all will have a chance to listen to the council's perspective, ask questions, et cetera, to help provide some guidance. I think we talked, maybe even at the last meeting, about your interest in having more, sort of some sidebars for particularly the missing middle project, but I think both of those could use this. And so this would be the opportunity to delve a little deeper into the topics and figure out kind of what the expectations are. Hopefully, they'll be a good...
Yeah, I expect to be around that.
Yes.
Great.
I tell you, you'll put out some information for us, you know, to read ahead of time, so...
Exactly.
It's not strictly a brainstorming without an agenda or anything like that.
Yeah, we give some context to both of those discussions, some background information. Was that where we give the paper? So remember Jordan, our intern? He's prepared some background information specifically on the missing middle topic. So that's probably a good thing to include in the packet.
It's possible, I'm not quite sure what the packet due date is for that meeting on the 20th, but it's possible that it could be available on the 7th. Don't hold me to that, I'm not sure. But if it is available at that meeting on the 7th, we could probably discuss it a little bit.
Good. Speaking of housing, I was kind of curious about the council's discussion on ADUs at one of the recent meetings. I wasn't able to be there or listen to it yet. Can you give us a summary of what happened?
Right.
A recap?
So the council, what we presented to the council was a series of topics that they had raised after reviewing the recommendation. I can tell you, it was a very active discussion. And I think they came generally to conclusion on most items. Jump in. So where they ended up with owner occupancy was the notion that for some period of time, I should preface this by saying this is going back to the council for their final direction before they have to hold another public hearing. So there's going to be an intervening meeting where some of this will be fleshed out a little bit more. But with owner occupancy, they wanted a period of time within which the owner would be required to live in one of the residences, either the primary or the ADU. But after that period of time, the owner occupancy requirement would expire. So that's that topic. With lot size, they actually wanted a larger lot, they wanted a lot-sized threshold before you could do two ADUs, a detached and an attached. And they also agreed that you could do two attached. And I think the threshold, I don't have my notes in front of me. I think the threshold was 8,000 square feet. So below 8,000 square feet, you could have one ADU, either attached or detached. And above 8,000, it could be either an attached and a detached, or two attached. On lot, on ADU sizes, I think they were comfortable for attached ADUs with 1,000 square feet, but they wanted to make it really clear that you didn't have to ask the city for permission if you were doing, like, you all talked about this, whether you were doing the basement or the second floor or whatever. That just was kind of automatically approved. Detached ADU sizes, they have not come to conclusion on. So they're still working on that. Parking, they wanted to eliminate the parking requirement. Door, the door requirement, they wanted to eliminate that requirement, where you couldn't have two doors on a street side. And I think, am I missing? The 24th, March 24th, they'll be taking up the question again. They have to revisit owner occupancy and the detached ADU size, for sure, at that meeting. And then in preparation for a public hearing. And they, the height, they agreed with you on the same height, but only two stories. So.
Were these positions, I guess I can probably go back and watch it myself. Were they consensus, unanimous?
It was a vote on every one. Generally, either 4-3 or 5-2.
Remember which were which?
I don't know. And the reason we're kind of hedging on this is because, well, there was a, they were using Robert's rules to pose motions, and then there would be a friendly amendment to the motion, and then there would be a friendly amendment to the friendly amendment. And they got a little balled up in the procedural aspect of it. So we were listening to kind of where we thought they were trying to get to and capture that. And then the whole idea of what they would have to, what they tabled to vote on at this next meeting, I frankly was not keeping track with that. So if you watch it, you will kind of see, there was a lot of, a lot of motions and amendments to the motions and, you know, I don't know where that left, but the bottom line is, the ones where they were kind of struggling with all these motions and amendments, they'll have to revisit those on the 24th. But we captured, so if you go online and you pull up the agenda bill for March 24th, you will kind of see what we captured as what we thought was the direction. It doesn't go into who made what motions. We did not go into that in the agenda bill.
Right, but they voted on every, every item. It wasn't a head nodding.
Great, thank you. So anything else for us tonight?
No, I don't think so.
Anything else from my colleagues? Okay, with that, meeting is adjourned, thank you.